Good evening. I would like to call, to order the Lake Havasu City Regular Council Meeting on Tuesday, April 23rd, 2019 at 6:00 PM. We'll now have an invocation by Dr. David Bybee from the Community Presbyterian Church, and then we'll have a Pledge of Allegiance led by the students working against Tobacco SWAT.
I count it an honor to be here. I'm not only representing Community Presbyterian Church, but I'm the new president of the London Bridge Christian Churches. That is, I was late for one of the meetings, and I sat at the head of the table, and they go, "Aha, now you're going to be the new president." But God kind of plans those things. Also, I want to invite you at 8:00 in the morning, on May 2nd, right out here near the road, and, not in the road, but near the road, the National Day of Prayer, and you're invited for that. Let us pray. Heavenly Father, and everlasting God, we lift up our wonderful and beautiful city before You, as we are a center for rest, enjoyment, fun, and a setting of desert mountains, beautiful desert mountains, and a colorful lake that is a gem in the southwest. May we also be a wholesome, spiritual destination and environment. Oh Lord, bless our churches and our people, that they reflect the knowledge and joy of You, Jesus Christ. We pray for the city workers, the police, the firemen, all those who work in our city. We pray for our hospital, our various institutions, all of our merchants, and all of our diligent, compassionate workers. We especially pray tonight for the city council, for its leadership, we pray for the mayor, Cal, and that we may all yield to You and Your will, Your will, O God, in Jesus' name. Amen.
And we'll now have the Pledge of Allegiance led by SWAT.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and the members of SWAT, if you'd like to introduce yourselves and tell us a little bit about your organization.
Hello, my name is Chase, I'm the vice president of SWAT.
Hi, my name is Yamon Sanchez, I'm the secretary of SWAT.
And my name is George Escobar, and I'm just a member of SWAT.
We normally have 13 members in our coalition, they couldn't attend this due to other obligations. Our coalition, what we do is normally we organize cigarette bug cleanups in our city parks.
We go on leadership trainings hosted by the STAND organization, which is the Arizona-wide coalition that works to ending and combating tobacco usage at underage levels and continued use for those that are addicted.
We have been in SWAT for three years now, and we plan on continuing in this coalition.
Do you have any questions for us?
Excellent, thank you for being here. Do any members of the council have any questions for these members? Well, thank you again for being here and leading us in the pledge, and thank you for the work that you're doing.
Thank you for having us.
Yes, you're welcome. Ms. Williams, if you'd like to call the roll call.
Councilmembers Cal Sheehy.
Here.
David Lane.
Here.
Jenny Koch.
Here.
Gordon Groth.
Here.
Michelle Lynn.
Here.
Donna McCoy.
Here.
Jim Dolan.
Present.
The next item on the agenda is our Call to the Public. This is where citizens have the opportunity to address the city council on issues within the jurisdiction of the city. Your comments will be limited to five minutes or less. If you wish to address an item that's already on today's agenda, we recommend that you wait till that time, because we can have a two-way conversation at that point. Otherwise, during the Call to the Public, because it's not on the agenda, we can only listen intently to whatever comments or thoughts that you may have, and address with staff at a later time. There is a light indicator box up on the podium, green means you have your five minutes, yellow means you have one minute remaining, and red means that the five minutes is up at that point. We do have a few folks that have signed up, you do not have to sign up for Call to the Public, but we'll start with the folks that signed up in the order that they signed up, and then anyone else that would like to address the council may do so afterwards. The first person is Valerie Marie Sigler-Rock, if you want to make your way to the podium, please state your name for the record for the clerk, and then...
Thank you very much, my name is Valerie Marie Sigler-Rock. My address is 1976 Hubble Drive, Lake Havasu City, Arizona. I have two zip codes, 86403 and 86404. I'm a retired real estate agent, very well-known in this town, retiring under the highest code of ethics in America. My house is zoned, I've been paying utilities for 14 years, I have no mortgage, my house is paid for. My house reflects I'm zoned at R1, R10, and R12. So, I'm your girl to speak to if you have questions about the shopping mall. I have too much information, so I'll try to make it short, because I don't want to confuse anybody, but I will tell you that I inherited all the top-secret information with technology in 1994, when I was living in Las Vegas. My grandfather, MOR, all the top-secret information in the nation that involves technology, which involves the utilities. So, I'm now having to get my water through Kingman. There has been a disruption with the HOA, which I'm not really part of, but it's just another long story. It really doesn't mean anything to me right now. My gas is being paid through the city, and I'm not really quite sure about the electricity. I may have to go to Kingman, because the office here is closed and there's 12 trucks sitting in the driveway. Now, I paid the city for over 12 years, and I've been without electricity for three years because of this lack of communication, that it's no man or woman's fault about any of this technology. No man or woman could have ever known about the magnitude of the sound system, that you look around this town and you'll see all the big towers, there's satellite receivers, there are sound systems, there are monitors, they're generated by pixels like in a camera. And so I'm not going to say a lot more, because I don't want to spook anybody by all this kind of information. So, anyway, I'm very knowledgeable about the shopping mall, I have given you some paperwork that will reflect the shopping mall. My father was mayor in Buena Park, California, Gerald L. Sigler, United States Navy, World War II. I'm very aware of everything, absolutely everything, as far as the continents separating millions of years ago in the ground tunnels, every continent. If you take the world and you put it together, all the continents, you'll see that there are ground tunnels on every continent. So, it's not unusual, we're all in just a different form of education, awareness, and understanding that these tunnels can be very dangerous, and you just don't want to go looking for one, because, you know, you might run into a rattlesnake.
Ms. Sigler-Rock, yeah, please address the council, you're addressing the council.
Well, there's children, and I'm a teacher too, so I'm sorry.
Oh, yes, and you could just look our way and address the council, I appreciate it.
Okay, all right, okay, well, I just, you know, okay, well, I think I've said enough, but the shopping mall incident was all about the difference between keeping the tax dollars in Buena Park as opposed to Disneyland. My grandfather was instrumental with Walt Disney and the movie studios, and the information is in this packet, and it's not really a packet, it's just notes, okay? And so, I'm very aware of everything. I got to go with the city manager in Buena Park, California, where Knox Berry Farm is, on a tour through the shopping mall, and my father explained to me how the money had to be kept in the city in order for the money not to go, the tax dollars, not to go into Anaheim, so they built a shopping mall. So, I got the tour of all the technology that was taking place in the new city hall in Buena Park, California, with my father. So, I understand all of this stuff, and I also have blueprints, and I'll be glad to leave you a copy of, that I made that explain the technology, and I have a copy that I can pull out if you'd like, and it just explains everything, the railroads, the electricity, the big heavy-duty equipment. I've met everybody that I could have met in my lifetime to be who I am for these type of answers, without prosecution or intimidation, or, it's just too much information that people didn't know, and all of a sudden they need to know it. So, I'm just very open to answer questions, and so I'll leave it at that, and have a good evening.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, the next person that signed up was Douglas Seeker.
Good evening, council, my name is Douglas Seeker, I am an educator for the statewide Independent Living Center. Last year, we had a class called CLA, where we graduated over 80 students in Mojave County, which was more than any other county in Arizona, so that's a good one for us. I wanted to thank the board speakers, such as John Mattson, who came to speak on the behalf of being on the Education Board, the young lady from First Things First, as well as Pastor David, who was here earlier, and as well as Cal, who reached out to us to speak on the behalf of city council, being the only board member that did last year, so you will have another opportunity with the new program. It is called the Arizona Education and Empowerment Initiative. This program is also by the state, was statewide Independent Living Center, to teach the history of children and caretakers about disabilities and in home life, how to step forward, how to be on boards, how to stand at our great Phoenixon City. Out of Ability 360, which is located in Phoenix, which is this $10 million outfit, there was only six people from that industry that went over and stood on a problem that we were having with ADA. Prescott Valley was trying to change the ADA laws, where if we put a plastic bag over an ADA sign, that means we have more parking for people that are normal, according to them. So, the state is really trying to push this class, it's going to be considered with disability history and independent living movement, goes all the way back to President Lincoln. Arizona Independent Living Network, where you will learn as a person with independent that with disabilities on how to live on your own, instead of in a center. Advocacy, how to speak up for yourself. Leadership, how to sit on a board, so they're bringing that back in. This is where the opportunities will be for people that were sitting on boards to speak on their behalf. Communication, how to speak up for your rights, how not to allow people that are sitting in different higher places saying, "You know what, we need to change the law. We need to change the ADA law because it doesn't fit us," just like the incident that happened up in Prescott Valley. Communication and engagement. Now, the state's not asking that we take a whole bunch of people and bust them down there, we can also write letters. People with disabilities need to speak up for what they believe in. If you do not speak up, these people in wheelchairs, and these people that have knowledge of people with disabilities, and the caregivers that take care of these people, and the only reason why there are caregivers, because of the Civil Rights Movement. If it wasn't for that, there wouldn't be caretakers to take care of the people with disabilities that will still be in a center, and are an institution, I guess as they call it. So, this is why it's very important that the statewide Independent Living Center gets out the information to the five different centers in Mojave, not only out of Yuma, Mojave County, Mojave County being that we do not have a center, we partner with Prescott Valley. So, they have a 9,000-square-foot building up there that we can get information from. So, that's what I have to speak about on this. Thank you very much for your time.
You're welcome. Did you want to share when the training is, or how to get a hold of your organization?
Yes, you can get a hold of New Horizons Empowerment Center, Disability Center up in Prescott Valley, they have a website. Also, you can go to the statewide Independent Living Center for the applications to do the classes. I will be holding classes in Kingman, here in Lake Havasu, at the Community Baptist Church, also in Mojave Valley at MCC, so those classes will start this summer.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, would anyone else like to address the city council and Call to the Public? Yeah, just make your way to the podium and just state your name for the record.
Chris Daigle, from the Lake Havasu Soccer League, the president, also the general manager of Arizona Flexible Packaging, and I bring that up. I'm here to talk about soccer and field space, but a little history of my passion to this city, and, you know, my dedication to the city. In 2006, 2007, our, the company that owns my company wanted to move our business out of town. The labor didn't make sense, logistics didn't make sense. We are a manufacturer here, we print food packaging, to give you a little background. I told them, "Okay, I'll move you up there, you're going to pay me double, I'll work for you five years, and I'm going to come back here," because I love Lake Havasu City. I've been here since 89, I've seen tremendous improvements of what the city has done to give back to the community, meaning the youth. Fast forward to today, Cypress Park, what a great addition to the community, great addition to our league. We have about 1,000 members to our league. During fall, there's still not enough field space to house all of our members. We are, half of our league during fall, practices one day a week for 45 minutes a day, and most of those kids have never played soccer, so to try to teach kids how to play soccer 45 minutes a week is humorous at best, but it's fun, and we'll, and I'll continue to do it. I don't even have, my kid right now, my youngest kid's 15, he's not even in the league anymore, I just signed up for another two years of my high-paying president's job. But I love it, but, so, that's my passion here, and that's why I came tonight to speak to you, Mr. Mayor, and the rest of the council. I want, I'm not coming here for a handout, I'm here to offer the Lake Havas Soccer League to be partners with the city on the growth of creating more field space here, creating eventually a sports complex. We really need to do something in the surrounding cities, I always mention Bullhead when I speak to people, the city leaders, of what they have on their, as far as field space. I know when we go to a tournament in Bullhead, there's 300 teams. When we travel out of town as a club, I know we spend anywhere between $400 and $800 a family. So, I can put numbers behind this all day on bringing tournaments here, and we can get to that point, but I paid the impact fee when I built my building here for my business, okay? I'm one of the few that did, everyone stopped building, I paid the impact fee, and our former mayor, Mr. Nixon, knew about it, every time I see him out, I go, "Hey, can I get that money back?" As a joke, kind of not really, but it was a joke. But, we're, I mean, like I said, we're dead, I'm dedicated to do this, and be partners, and if it takes, you know, five years, eight years, I'll still be available. I know the members of my league will as well. We're here to partner with the city, and I know I have some things set up with some city leaders soon to discuss how we move forward, but I really, like I said, it makes sense to put money back into the youth, into some of us not-youth that still like to play. It's, you know, sometimes you can't put numbers on it, let's put it that way, so, I appreciate your time, thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address city council and Call to the Public? You would have to wait to the second Call to the Public at the end of the meeting, yes. Have you just stated your name for the record?
Thank you, my name is Ezekiel, last name is K-E-S-I-T-I-L-W-U, you can try and spell it, or say it, but it's spelled, it's spelled K-C-T-I-L-W-E, K-C-T-I-L-W-E. I come here, I rise up here with the president of our league, Lake Havasu Soccer League, but really, I stand before you as the city council, not as a representative of Lake Havasu Soccer League, I stand before you as a representative for all the sports cadres in our city. Our city is growing, and it's growing tremendously, and the growth, we see the growth, mostly young couples, young families are coming into our town, and some of them, sometimes they live, they stay here for one year, and then they tend back, either go back to California or back to the big cities that have facilities. So, I stand before you in a plea, he stood before you as a partner, to partner with you, but I'm pleading before you to say, when, when we had elections last year, there was Prop 409, that the city, or our city needed help to make that pass, it was the youthful city citizens that made sure that this passed, and it passed. And the promise that we were promised was that if Prop 409 passes, there will be availability of funds to make sure that we fund things like sports facilities, things like public safety, roads, and everything like that. And I understand that this funding, if it's still there, we, as sports facilities, we are competing with, with things that are more pertinent to the safety of our city. But my, my, my standing here is to just say, we need your help, we need you to build a future for our children, we need you to build a future for, for all these kids that I would ask to rise. If you are here, and you are representing the Lake Havasu Soccer League, please rise. And this is just a portion of what we have. Greater things we can do, you guys can sit down. Greater things we can do in this city, if we have facilities, the president, Daigle, did mention that we can actually bring sports tourism into our, into our city. I know the baseball is already doing it, but they still also have limited, limited field space. We could do much, and he said, he does mention things, other cities like Bullhead City. I don't want to compare ourselves to Bullhead City as a competition, but as an inspiration to copy from them, to learn from them. How did you guys do it? How did you, and, and we had a tournament with Bullhead like a week ago, and I asked one of the people that were involved with the setting up of the fields in Bullhead, they have beautiful fields, and I do believe that some of you have been invited to the May 3rd of the opening of the Anderson Stadium, I will call it a stadium in Torah, because it's huge, it's indoor. They will be opening, officially opening the indoor sports facility in Bullhead, but the thing that hurts is one of our companies here, one of our main companies, an auto company here, Anderson Company, put money to have their name put, and we're taking money, not not sheer change. And I was thinking to myself, if our company, that is headquartered in our city, can take its money out of our city and go and sponsor something out of our city, what is it that we are doing wrong? Or what is it that we are not engaging? I do think that we need to engage the youth, as the city, we need to partner with you, as the president said. We are here to partner. Yes, we don't want handouts, but at the same time, we need you guys to lead us, we need you to lead us, so we can lead them and make a better future for them. So, my, my standing here today is a plea, I say, consider us, consider them, consider the future of Lake Havasu City. Thank you for the time.
Thank you. And just for a point of clarification for the folks in the audience and that are also listening at home, Prop 409, which we certainly appreciate the support and the passage of, was an expenditure limitation, it wasn't additional funds, so I just want to keep that in mind, if anyone wants to, any additional conversation, you know, you can reach out to any of the council members, but it was an expenditure limitation that, that increased the spending amount, it did not provide for funding mechanisms, so it didn't increase taxes, didn't increase revenues, so it's not like money came because of that. So, just for a point of clarification, offline, we could talk a little bit more in detail, but I just wanted to remind folks of that. Would anyone else like to address city council during the Call to the Public? All right, seeing none, we'll close the Call to the Public. Item six is our consent agenda, would any council members like to remove any of these items for further discussion?
Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Koch?
Motion? I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented. Second?
We have a motion from Councilmember Koch, and a second from Councilmember McCoy. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Item seven is correspondence, communications, petitions, announcements, and the city manager report. Item 7.1 is announced vacancies on the Lake Havasu City Boards, Committees, and Commissions. Ms. Williams?
Mayor and city council, there are several vacancies on Lake Havasu City Boards, Committees, and Commissions. The listing tonight will be not only the current vacancies, but also the upcoming vacancies. Airport Advisory Board, one regular pilot member, that's it, Board of Adjustment, two regular members, three alternate members, Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, two regular members, Planning and Zoning Commission, three regular members, and the Public Safety Personnel Retirement System, one regular member. Citizens interested can pick up a application at City Hall, and they are also available on the city's website.
Thank you. And item 7.2 is the city manager's report, Mr. Knutson?
Mr. Mayor, with your permission, if I can move this report to the end of the meeting, well, my computer's restarting and going through with more, more difficulty today.
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
All right, we'll move on to item eight, public hearings. We have 8.1, Adopt Ordinance Number 19-1216, Amending Lake Havasu City Code Title VIII, Health and Safety, to Add Chapter 8.14, Reputed, Repeated Use of Emergency Services. Mr. Knutson?
Thank you, Mayor and council. This is the second reading of the ordinance 19-1216, is addressing the repeated use of 911 calls for non-emergencies. We've had a number of non-emergency phone calls, situations in the community where our residents are contacting 911 for non-emergency situations, and this is causing concern with the stress placed on our personnel, and having issues where we need to respond to emergency situations that could be delayed because of that. The ordinance itself spells out that there's nine non-emergency calls that can be placed through 911. After that ninth call for a non-emergency-type service, the caller would be assessed an actual cost of providing that service. Calls that, into 911 that trigger a police report, or transport, or other emergency situations, do not count towards any of the nine, nine calls, we're talking about non-emergency situations. And our hope is that we do not collect any revenues, but that the residents understand the responsible way to use the 911 system. So, with that, I can address any questions, and Chief Davis is here as well to address any specifics that you might have.
Thank you. Do any members of the council have any questions for Mr. Knutson?
Mr. Mayor?
Vice Mayor Lane?
Just clarifying, not, when you say nine non-emergency calls, that's nine non-emergency calls per month.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, per month, yeah.
Any, any other questions for Mr. Knutson, for members of the council? All right, again, this is the second time that this is coming before us to adopt this ordinance. Most of the process that we're trying to do is educate folks on how to use emergency services and 911, and through that process, and through the multiple public hearings that we've had, the radio communications, coffee with the mayor, conversations with council, we're achieving that, and so we always are going to take care of any emergencies, and always meet the, meet the citizens' needs, but we need to ensure that through education that, that we have the opportunity to do that. This is a public hearing, would anyone like to address the city council on this matter? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing.
Mr. Mayor?
Vice Mayor Lane?
Motion?
Yes.
I move to adopt ordinance number 19-1216, Amending Lake Havasu City Code Title VIII, Health and Safety, to Add Chapter 8.14, Repeated Use of Emergency Services.
Second?
We have a motion from Vice Mayor Lane, and a second from Councilmember McCoy. Is there any additional conversation? We're ready to vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Item 8.2 is Adopt Ordinance Number 19-1217, Amending Plan Development 05-002-00008, the shops at Lake Havasu, by removing parcels APNs 120-54-002, 120-54-003B, 120-54-004, 120- the shops at Lake Havasu, by removing parcels, APNs, 120-54-002, 120-54-003B, 120-54-004, 120-54-007, and 120-61-004, 5601 Highway 95 North, and rezoning the properties from C2 PD, General Commercial Plan Development District, to C2 General Commercial District. Mr. Smalley?
Thank you. Glad you had to read that, and I did not. For the benefit of the audience, I'm not going to assume that everyone knows where the mall property is. However, it is located in the northernmost portion of the community, on the west side of the Highway 95, adjacent to the airport. This is a recent aerial photo. You can see right in this area is what we describe as the mall proper, if you will. However, this is also a good illustration of what in 1997 was originally called the Center Project, which was a mall property. It included 205 acres. And it started way up here, actually even off the picture, came all the way down, dropped down to the bottom here, which this is Home Depot, which was ultimately removed from that original PD. However, tonight, or I'm sorry, this is the original general development plan from back in 1997. You can see it had a variety of uses, including a hotel parcel, regional mall concept, and even some industrial park sites included in that. That was amended in 2005. 105 acres, generally located between Center Loop Road and Retail Center Boulevard on the south. Like I said, in 2005, when it was rezoned, there was several conditions placed on that mall at the time, one of which, there were some allowances as well within that PD, one of which was that buildings were allowed to be built 46 feet in height to incorporate some of the architectural features of the buildings, obviously a variety of structures in that original mall. This is a map that was provided by the applicant upon submittal. And the request this evening originally included four parcels, this odd-shaped parcel in the middle of the mall, let's call it the mall proper, if you will. And then also three of these, we'll call them out parcels, they're about a little over an acre each along the highway. Staff received an email this morning from the applicant requesting that those three properties be removed from the request. So tonight, the council action is only going to apply to that property that's outlined in blue. Unique-shaped parcel includes several of the mall buildings, none of the major anchor tenants. This is another map that was provided by the applicant as well. It describes it a little bit better in that you can see Walmart on the north end, Dillard's on the south end, but the application this evening includes the buildings that are highlighted in black. So everything you see outlined in black, all these buildings are currently existing, except that it includes two retail pads in this location, which basically are gravel at this point. The parking lots are fully developed, however, these are the only two areas that are included within the rezoning this evening that are not developed. There was an amendment in 2007. I probably don't have to go over that anymore because it doesn't apply. It only applied to the out parcels. But the reason we're here, the development code, even though it was adopted as recently as 2016, does not include a definition for omni-channel retail. And I'm not going to try to describe it nor define it. However, I can assure you that it was not a consideration when the mall was originally developed in 2005. So based on that, the applicant had a choice to either amend the PD or remove it from the PD. They chose to request to remove it from the PD because it's a use that's not described in the code. And so one of the procedures that we go through as staff is we look for something that the definition most closely related to that, which happens to be warehousing and wholesale distribution, which is allowed in the C2 district. However, it was not contemplated at the time when the original mall concept was put into place in 2005. So staff felt that the most appropriate action would be to, instead of making that decision at the staff level, take it through a major amendment or a rezoning. And that's why we're here. And that's all I have. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
Do any members of the council have any initial questions for Mr. Smalley? I believe the applicant's here. Would the applicant like to make a presentation as well?
Good evening, Mayor, council members. My name is Michael Gordon, the applicant on this project representing the owner, Jared Ports, and his company that is looking to make the changes in the mall. So we'll explain that a little bit. I wanted to thank Stuart for the kind of the overview. There's a lot of history with the mall, as everyone in this room knows. It's probably clear to some people and not clear to most people in terms of the history that's out there. Just wanted to go back briefly on the mall itself. As Stuart mentioned, you know, started with the larger 205-acre parcel, and then it's kind of been narrowed down over a few various PD amendments and revisions. What we're looking at on the screen in terms of the shops at Lake Havasu being the core part of that. Over the years, the Autoplex was broken apart and rezoned in a PD separately. At the bottom, the Home Depot area and some of the other out parcels were separated out. And since then, even on top of that, we've had various pieces of those PDs be removed from PDs. So we've seen this kind of effort over the years, I'll say, in terms of trying to stay up with current market conditions, trying to make some changes and adapt as things have gone on. In terms of what we're dealing with here today, the mall proper itself developed years ago by an out-of-town development company. That group, while trying to make their best efforts at getting the mall filled and successful, did a good job initially getting some major anchors in there. Some of those tenants have done very well and continue to do very well. And we talk about Walmart, JCPenney's, Dillard's, the movie theater have continued to do well and be very successful even in terms of nationwide numbers. So we have some strong anchors out there. What the mall has struggled with really ever since inception is the traditional mall component that we refer to here as the mall proper. So the Main Street aspect of this outdoor mall, the series of small shops that were envisioned to bring more traditional mall-type retail out to the shops at Lake Havasu. Fast forward a few years through a recession to today, and you look at what's happened in retail since that happened, and since we slowed down and tried to recover, retail has changed dramatically across the country, as everyone knows. Your traditional mall setups in general, whether they're indoor malls or outdoor malls, struggle today in some capacity, and a lot of them are being re-envisioned, reimagined, redeveloped in various capacities. So that's really what we're faced with here in Lake Havasu City with the shops. Fortunately, at the end of this past year, there was an opportunity for the PED to assist local folks, local investment dollars, to come in and try and get control of the mall for the first time. So at the end of 2018, we had a local group step up that they're here today, and both the PED and Mr. Ports would like to address you as well. So I'll try to keep my comments fairly short. But it was a big step and a big turning point, I feel, for Lake Havasu City and for the mall in general. For the first time, we have local ownership, local presence controlling the mall proper, if you will. While there are various owners of the mall, which started as one piece, and that when the economy turned and things changed, broke apart between that original development company and the different owners, there are still different owners of different pieces. The key component to that, I feel, is mall proper that we're addressing today, that being the center, the heart of the mall, where everyone kind of passes through no matter where they're going, Walmart, the movie theater, any of the other anchors. And unfortunately, that's been the piece that has been fairly quiet and stagnant over the years. With local ownership, with the intent and the vision that they have, and where we're trying to drive this, I feel, you know, if we do this right and we support this properly can really help reimagine the center of that mall, bring some activity and bring some life to that. And so that's really what we're here to talk about today. And with that, we're faced with this PD amendment, PD abandonment of portion of this PD, really to, as Stuart put, you know, we need to, the existing PD is fairly restrictive on the types of uses, the definitions of what are in that PD that can go into the mall proper, straight retail. And when we apply the straight retail definition to our current zoning code, pretty restrictive on what straight retail means. Well, in today's world, like I was explaining when we talk about what is retail, in today's world, it has changed a lot. And you heard Stuart mention the term omni-channel retail. I think James will address that in a little more detail, but really what that means is the shift we see in retail across the country. Not everything and very few things are bought just traditionally drive to the store and buy that product anymore, good or bad. It's changed to a whole various assortment of things, from small online retailers to major players like Amazon and others. And even your major box stores like Walmart now, you can order, call, drive out, and pick up at the store rather than even going into that big box. Omni-channel kind of encompasses all of that. It focuses on stores, retailers. It, in essence, is what the direction Walmart has gone, where you have the box, you have the retail, you have the storefront, but you also have the support online, where you're shipping stuff out online. You have the support where people can drive out and pick something up. And you have even a step further where there are local deliveries coming out of that retail store to local residents or businesses. And so when we look at some of the new ways people are conducting business, unfortunately, it doesn't fit very well within the existing PD as it's crafted. So we're here today to kind of revisit that, look at pulling, if you will, the core of the mall out of the PD, allowing us to fall more within the general C2 zoning classifications, which open things up to allow us to have these mix of retail and other uses that are allowed within C2, but done in a way that will support the mall. Other things that are envisioned out there include activity drivers, sports venues, things that may drive and bring kids and bring families out to the mall for other reasons than just shopping. At the end of the day, the location of the mall and the mix of uses, it needs activity drivers that bring people out for more than just one use, more than just going to Walmart. If you can come out and the kids are, you know, going to some sort of activity center for an hour, whatever that may be, while parents are shopping or taking in a movie or going out for dinner, it's that mix of uses, that mixed-use feel that really needs to help bring viability to the mall and other multiple reasons for people to go out and spend time out there and invest their time and their dollars and their family's time into the mall itself. And that's the goal of what we're trying to accomplish here today. Going forward, like I said, we're here to try and remove this portion from the PD. One thing I did want to point out, there are, as part of the overall underlying mall ownership, there are restrictive covenants on the private side of things. So while we're talking today about zoning and what the city allows from a zoning perspective, there is a whole other layer, series of restrictive covenants on the private side. And while all of that used to be under one umbrella in terms of ownership, even though it's broken apart with different ownerships, different tenants, you still have an underlying restrictive covenants that run with all of the parcels that control the look, feel of what happens out there as well as the uses that happen out there. So there is control beyond just zoning in terms of trying to create, keep, and maintain the intent of the look and feel of that mall. And again, back to the local ownership and why we feel that allowing some flexibility into the heart of the mall will be successful with local ownership invested, living there, working out of there as their office, will have a lot better grasp on what happens day to day, how to maintain those facilities, how to, you know, continue to drive and bring businesses to the mall itself. With that, I'll kind of stop, ask if there's any questions from council, and then I know, like I said, James from the PED and Mr. Ports, the local owner, would like to say a few words as well.
Thank you. Do any members of the council have any questions for Mr. Gordon? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes. Mr. Gray, would you like to address council?
Good evening, Mayor, council. I just wanted to point out a few things, why the partnership got involved originally. Obviously, this was an incredible opportunity that was given to us in a very short order. And we just happened to be working with a few clients that would fit in what I'll call a new revisioning of the mall, omni-channel. And you're hearing a lot about it now. And in fact, for both clients that are here, the two local, they've grown businesses out of this town. So, you know, we were already invested with a design firm, looking at creating a new facility for them. And when this came online, this is really a real nexus into the next way of doing business, which is also encouraging local people to buy in the omni-channel. It's the same reason why some major, major retailers like Warbly Parker, who went to a billion-dollar business, is now putting bricks and mortar in major cities because people want to visit their stores. So, but I want to just talk about a few things. I want to talk about the space and the value of what it was. Just imagine that the four partners that currently controlled what we're calling mall proper, the value of that property as it sat pretty much vacant, let's just call it about 85% vacant, let's just be fair, really had a negative cash flow of $400,000. So the use of the space was going down. And, you know, from our perspective, we started in our due diligence, and we really, we did a couple of things. We wanted to make sure that everyone in what I'll call the center, the neighborhood, the retailers, did they understand what we wanted to do? Did they understand omni-channel? Were they supportive? And that was the first thing we did. We literally walked to every retailer, and we started talking about our vision or what we would possibly entertain if we were to accept this. And what was really interesting, there was two things that happened immediately. One, and I know a lot of you have heard this before, but I think it's good for public consumption, that every single retailer out there is already involved in omni-channel and were very quick to show us what they do. And if you really want to get down to the core of omni-channel, there's two ways to think about it. It's one, meeting your customers where they are. And so for most customers around here, they're on their phone. It's the quickest transactional way to do business. But second, and this is so key, omni-channel does something where it takes in-store locations, and instead of having only 55,000 customers that can drive to you, you become unlimited. So anyone in North America that's looking for that exact yellow thing that's sitting, that yellow dress in Dillard's, it's a size small, can buy off Dillard's. Logistically, it comes here, and then they ship it to California. Why? Because what would take longer, telling someone in a warehouse to ship it? It's already on display. And so I think that's a real key thing to start understanding, that we're literally opening up our retail center to bring customers all over North America in this certain process of omni-channel. So understanding the support was key. But then from a higher level of economic development, here's the real core that, why we got really passionate about it. One, jobs, right? So immediately, we saw the advantage of unlocking this facility and creating immediate jobs. And so for one company, if this is realized, we're looking at a $2 million investment, 50 jobs, scalable. This is a company that was grown here locally, out of a garage, and is still scaling. It's all the way up to an Amazon 50 fulfillment partner. Incredible business, has great retention of local employees. But here's the second thing that I think our organization got caught up in. People wanted something to happen. Like, I'll just express the leadership team of Walmart. They literally said, if you want us to help recruit, we will go to any city, we will show you our numbers, we need something to happen. We've been waiting since 2008. Please, let's do something. And we heard that from JCPenney's, which, as you know, they're the third most profitable JCPenney's in North America. That's incredible. You know, they just won the Founder's Award. So that became our passion of, think about how many people have invested in the north side of town, and they've been and they've been there the whole time delivering quality. And we felt like, how do we create an employment sector in one side, start heightening the entertainment side and then create a, a new, uh, smaller retail, but still retail-driven, right? And so that's why we got involved and we happen to be very lucky to have two incredible local entrepreneurs. And so with that, if you don't have any questions of me, I'd like to bring up Mr. Ports.
Do any members of the council have any questions for Mr. Gray? All right. Uh, Mr. Ports?
Mayor, City Council, thank you for having us tonight. I didn't wear my suit for the third time, so this is, this is still okay. But, um, you know, it's, it's a, it's exciting to hear all the things that, that Michael and, and James have to say. And, and, you know, I just want to reiterate the fact that I am a local person. I went to high school here, um, these lions that are out here and they, the audience, I brought them as backup uh, because we participate in that, in that organization. We co-chair, um, we spend time here and, and we're greatly committed to the, to the community and seeing this community grow and do great things. Um, when James brought us the opportunity, we were engaged in looking at potentially the feasibility of bringing an omni-channel uh, online retailer to Lake Havasu. We had recently acquired a company that has facilities in uh Maryland, uh, Arkansas and Reno. And we're looking at relocating the west coast uh facility to Lake Havasu because, because I'm here, because we, because we wanted to as a company have a local presence and, and do that. Um, and then also having uh Tom and Megan Sanders who are here, who are looking at a, a nice large space. Um, it's a really exciting opportunity to have the potential to have two great companies, um, that employ a lot of people that serve a, serve a need and fulfill, um, you know, fulfill opportunity for folks to go to work, have great jobs, learn a skill set that's growing. Um, we, we, we're pretty confident that Am- Amazon is here to stay. And, you know, Amazon is getting into the brick and mortar business. They, they're buying Whole Foods and they're sort of transitioning back into that brick and mortar, but that's the omni-channel. And so there, we're all trying to figure that out, um, which leads us to the fact that it's not in a code anywhere. So we're all trying to figure out how to do that, how to do it correctly. Um, you know, we believe with, with just the short period of time that we've been involved, all of your support, we've been very open and transparent about what we want to do, what our plans are and the fact that we're willing to invest our money uh to get things kick-started. Um, we have honestly very overwhelming support and, and opportunity to bring folks. We've got, you know, a chain restaurant that's really excited to come. We've got a very cool uh sports, high-performance sports group that wants to come here to serve our high-performance sports athletes like our, our soccer club and our baseball clubs and different things like that, to offer indoor facilities for our kids to go during the the summer months here and, and, and at all times to, to polish our skills. So when we go out of town, we can take down all those teams and whoop on them when we do that, uh, which we love. And so, you know, we want, we want to, we want to have some, some impact on the community and do some great things. Uh, you know, I think with, with what, with what we've done and how it's gone, um, I think people are waiting for this to happen. I think people are excited that the support that we've had has been overwhelming from Walmart and JCPenney's and Dillard's and the folks there. Uh, they believe that it'll drive their business. Um, beyond that, there's a lot of growth going on the north side, which you're all aware of, Viewpoint, North Point, a huge RV park that's going out there. And there's no amenities on the north side, uh, for those folks. So they're, they're all headed into town and, and we've received a lot of support from the, from the north side to, to provide some amenities and some things for folks to do out there, um, in the entertainment space and that. And, 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 you know, we believe that we can be a big part of another small downtown Lake Havasu for the north side, um, giving folks a place to come and bring their kids and have a little date night while their kids are working out or doing that, um, and just provide those amenities. Um, you know, we think that it's very critical that this, um, that this PD be amended to C two zoning because s- time is of the essence in these things. Um, Tom and Megan's business is moving at the speed of the internet, which is light speed. They're growing like crazy. Um, my guess is they're going to outgrow their space before they get there. A fantastic business, fantastic group. And, and so, you know, time is of the essence to get things going, to get that, to get, to meet Walmart's needs. Let's just do something, let's get some things happening. And so, you know, we, we're thrilled, we're excited. We appreciate so much the support that we've received from, from the council, from, from everybody in the city. And, uh, you know, we've heard, we've heard very little, if any, um, negative comments. And I think everybody in Lake Havasu, including myself, who, who's been here very long times, ready for some exciting things to happen on the north side and at the mall. So appreciate the time. If there's any questions, I'm.
Great, thank you. Do any members of the council have any questions for Mr. Ports? All right. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Do any members of the council have any questions before we open the public hearing? Is that, uh, did anyone else say, what the applicants want to speak? All right. So we'll open the public hearing. Uh, this is open to anyone that would like to speak, just make your way to the podium and state your name. Um, and I, um, yeah, you make your way to the podium and just state your name for the clerk and share your, uh, your comments. Again, there is, for anyone that wants to speak during the call of public, the indicator light's on there as well.
Pardon me?
The indicator light for anyone that's going to be speaking, uh, during call to the public is, is there as well. So.
Thank you. My name is Valerie Marie Sigler Rock. Um, I'm on the zoning issue, which is part of, uh, an issue, it's airport, the shopping mall and the area that I live in. Um, a lot of the money that was, um, used to build the shopping center followed me and it's part of my inheritance. The same thing that happened in California, Buena Park. I've never been legally married and all of the paperwork that I have retained has been recorded with copyright and patented attorneys from this into the country, all the way to New York City. So the reason that you're having a problem with this kind of communication and the empty stores, it's because of the inheritance that followed me and built that shopping center. Now, I have a marionette collection that has been misplaced and I have plans when it comes back together, and it will, um, for education that will bring great entertainment and education to the empty stores that are now at Dillard's. I drive through there and I view this area quite often. And I have plans that have been stolen from my house because of who I am. And, you know, it's the neighborhood that it just, you know, I'm not blaming anybody in particular. Just when I come home, there's things that are missing. That's why I carry that bag with me. So I'm the missing link in the shopping mall. Once again, my name is Valerie Marie Sigler Rock. The address is nineteen seventy-six Hubble Drive. I am the daughter of Gerald Neil Sigler and my mother, Mary Dawn Johnson. And I'm sure you've all seen this type of paperwork. I've never signed a contract, um, to give permission for anybody else to re- replace who I am. I'm totally qualified, knowledgeable, and legally I can read any contract and write a contract without a bunch of confusing diction. So, I've never been married. And so that's a reason that there's been a little lack of communication. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the city council? Uh, please state your name for the clerk.
Name Douglas Seeker, S I E K E R. I want to thank these people for coming into our city. Um, as a third-party job coach for the state of Arizona, um, it's for people with disabilities. I'll be knocking on their door. So I want to just tell them thank you for coming in.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the city council on this matter? If you could, uh, just state your name for the clerk.
Good evening, Council and Mayor. My name is Dante Marinelli. I'm a thirty-five-year resident of Lake Havasu. And I guess I'm speaking in, I guess with the forecast that we would love to see this project move forward. I think sometimes we sit back and we let things happen or we don't let things happen, and that's probably more important. We're moving forward and we're moving fast. And Lake Havasu has to start picking it up as well. I think in some of the investments and things that we've made in town, we've shown that the town is a very viable city. Um, if you bring it, they will come. And I think this is a great opportunity. And yes, the mall business has changed horrendously. I think all of you know that. Um, we were just in Phoenix this, this weekend and went through the district and some of those areas up there, the shopping centers, and they've all converted to this program. And we're seeing doctors' offices, we're seeing dentists, we're seeing, uh, some of the omni-businesses that are moving in. And they're in a big city. So you can imagine what a plus this would be for us in rural areas, that we don't have the opportunity to go five doors down and hit a mall, seven miles over and hit another mall, three miles over and hit another mall. We don't have that opportunity here. I think what you're going to see is you're going to see being on the north side, that the mall is going to fill a need that we've intended it to be. And that's the people from Kingman and the people from Bullhead that will now come because they're not traveling all the way through town in order to get to the shopping center. I think, and I believe that's the reason why, when I sat on some of the boards that looked at this particular center, that was the reason why they went out on the north side, because we can bring people in from those areas that would normally go to different cities. So I would hope that we would look at this as an opportunity. Um, I'm thrilled to death to see somebody local that's doing it. I think that speaks volume because, you know, for us, and I know Cal and some of the other people, you know, we brought our kids to this city. What a great opportunity to have them be able to build in the city and continue on. We're trying to bring young people in. Young people bring young people. And I think that's important to take a look at. Yes, is a jobs an option for all of us? Yeah, but I think the services that they're going to provide are most needed. So I would urge you to encourage them to continue to build, to make the right choices. I think when somebody speaks on investing their own money upfront, that speaks volumes. Because a lot of people do not, you know, they'll get investors, they'll find other people to, um, build out things and then they move. And now we're stuck with a bunch of investors that have never been to Havasu. I think you're really seeing that right now in our uptown area. If you look at trying to redevelop that area and the problems that we've always had, why is it? Because ninety percent of the people don't even live in Havasu that own those buildings any longer. And they're not willing to invest. So when we have this opportunity to see a local individual take the step to invest, I think we should move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the city council on this matter? If you could just state your name for the city clerk, please?
My name is Chad Nelson. Um, I'm a local business owner and I'm on the Planning and Zoning Commission. I was not here, um, when this came forward for us, but I do want to, uh, express my support for it. Um, I have five kids and a lovely wife and cannot wait to see more things happen at the mall, uh, so we can go on a date night. I'm excited about the, this is our opportunity to, to, to save our mall right here tonight. And there's going to be many cities in the, in the near future that are going to be facing the same thing. And some of them might hit this opportunity too late. So we have an opportunity to hit it right now and I just wanted to offer my support. Uh, thank you very much.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the city council on this matter? All right. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Any members of council, Vice Mayor Lane?
I do have something I'd like to say. More comments than anything. One, um, what's going on at the mall right now for the last eleven years that it's been open? It's not working. So, uh, it's time to change something. Um, we have these, uh, big box stores that are out there. They have embraced the omni-channel. Uh, you can't walk through these stores without seeing their employees uh, doing the shopping for the people who've already done it online. Uh, so it's, this is a new way, uh, of shopping. And I think it was Michael that said that, uh, we're always trying to catch up with current market conditions. Well, here's a, a chance to take a leap forward and instead of trying to catch up, lead the way. Um, and change this mall proper into something that is actually viable for the city. Another thing I like about this is, uh, the people told us a couple of years ago when we were doing the Vision twenty twenty that they wanted to see us help the young entrepreneurs here in town, uh, develop the city and to help grow their businesses. So now we have some people here that grew up in Lake Havasu, graduated from Lake Havasu High School, that want to build their businesses. So here's the perfect opportunity for us to do exactly what it is that the people in the city want us to do. So, you know, I think it's a great project. I think, uh, this is the way of the future and, uh, I look forward to, uh, good things happening out there and, and I myself, I hope this passes. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Dolan?
Yeah, I just want to say it's, um, it's very exciting. I'm definitely looking forward to what's coming out, out there. Having grown up in Havasu, we've always wanted a mall and the expectation of what it was going to be and what it turned into. Um, like I said, it's still even successful and that the, you know, Walmart and JCPenney's are there. And I think this is the, the missing piece. But, you know, just remind everybody, you know, it's not us that are making the, the big decision. I mean, we're simply changing a zoning from C two PT, PD to a C two. Um, the true people that are really making the big decisions in this room are the people back there that are putting their money up uh, to make this a, a reality for us all. Um, we have the, the soccer people in here talking earlier about things for the kids to do in the community. You know, they're definitely fulfilling a need at that, you know. It, it, it's very exciting for being, uh, someone here with a family, definitely looking forward to it. And I thank you guys for, uh, for what you're doing for the community.
Councilmember McCoy?
Mr. Mayor, yes, I just wanted to say that, um, through all of this, I'm sorry, I'm old. It takes me a little bit to understand this, but I just want to make sure that our big box stores, as we're calling out there, are definitely loving this. I want to make sure they're not going to feel like things are different and now they're going to have to leave or close or, I mean, they're happy with this is what I'm hearing and I just want to make sure that is the case.
Yeah. Mr. Gordon, do you want to address that or Mr. Gray?
Yeah, I, so, um, just to be crystal clear, um, that was the first thing we did is we went and talked to um, the entire management teams of the three big box stores and then the mini anchors as well. Um, and then, uh, of course, we held a, an open house out there and invited them and they, they publicly supported us in that space. Um, and I, I guess that goes back to what I said before. Um, I think that they've been holding up their part. I mean, you can only imagine, um, the, investing that much money. Um, I think about Walmart and the amount of money they, um, they're so prideful about putting in our community and how many employees they have. And, you know, they had an expectation that place was going to be full, you know. So think about that since two thousand and eight. So, um, they're on board, they're excited. They, they've, um, offered to be a part of the team, which, um, that was one of the first things we did. Um, we're a very small organization. We needed a, a lot of people to do this and, um, we're not afraid to reach out. And, um, they immediately came on board when we saw that we were assembling, um, talents um, and said, how can we be a part of helping you, um, make us better, right? So I hope that answers that.
That does, thank you. And, and there was one other thing now, there are currently, uh, two, how many owners in the mall do we have now?
Um, I don't have the deck of baseball cards right now. There, there, there's quite a few.
Okay.
Um, um, that's the easiest way to explain it.
People that are just, you know, the, I, I don't know, I, the landowners. How many landowners do, I know we have lots of people renting their spaces and stuff like that.
Um, so let me, let me.
Do we have this coordination that, you know, everybody's going to play fair and do their part? And that's the only thing I.
Yeah. Well, let me address it this way. Um, and I don't, I don't have how many, uh, landowners. Um, we certainly could get that for you. Um, we'd have to go back to track maps and, you know, look through LLCs. Um, but here's the way I would say it. So the four previous owners that had a stake in mall proper and, um, they put up four hundred thousand dollars in this for an opportunity fund. Um, they're still our partners. Um, they still believe in it. They still have stakes in it. Um, they're, they're at the meetings with Jared. They're, they want to see Tom and Megan succeed. So, um, you know, I, I, I think, I think for them, just seeing people locally there every day is been a game changer. Uh, Jared moved his company out there immediately and, um, is walking around on his phone, um, all the time. He's very, uh, accessible. He's very accessible. And I think that's a change, you know, from, from the situation that when we got involved, it was a little bit more rigorous to get a hold of people, to understand the space, to view it. Um, and it's not that case anymore.
Thank you. That, that explains a lot. I mean, I think this is wonderful. I'm happy that this is moving forward. I just wanna make sure that we're all, we're not, just wanna make sure we're all working together on this.
Yeah, Councilmember McCoy, also, I, I believe Mr. Gordon expressed earlier with the CCNRs that'll allow, as ownership potentially changes in many years into the future, there, there's some protections for, for everything out there. So Vice Mayor Lane, did you have a comment?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Since I know everybody's patiently waiting Jess's um report, I'd like to make a motion.
Do any other members of council have any, any other comments or questions first?
If I may, Mr. Mayor, I did have a question. But I wanna, of course, thank Planning and Zoning for the work that they've put into this and the recommendation they forwarded. And usually when we change zoning, um, one of the comments offered by our, our city staff is whether or not there were any objections filed to this.
I did not receive any written nor verbal objection.
Thank you, sir. Um, just briefly comment that um, I, I think everybody in Lake Havasu recognizes that there are going to be challenges when you build a great big mall and, and it's um not air conditioned and you're in one of the hottest places in the world. This is an opportunity to actually change this game a little bit. Uh, and as um, some of the other members of council have pointed out, it's very forward thinking. And I think it's very important, but I also want to mention that um, it's extremely critical uh that we're creating these jobs as well. There's kinda, you got a lot of people in Lake Havasu who are retired. And for them, the creation of jobs isn't as important as it is for the people who have to go out there and slug away forty, fifty, sixty, some of them seventy and eighty hours a week just to make ends meet. Um, so having additional jobs, it, you, in my mind, you'd have to raise a very, very high bar uh to create some sort of outrageous objection to the creation of new jobs and new business. I don't, I don't think I'm accustomed to seeing that. So I very much support this. Thank you.
Thank you. And uh, just as a reminder, this matter does come uh before us today with a unanimous uh recommendation from Planning and Zoning Commission. So. Any other comments? Mr. Dolan, I'll entertain your motion.
Alrighty. I move to adopt ordinance number nineteen dash twelve seventeen, amending plan development of zero five zero zero two zero 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 eight by removing parcel APN one two zero dash six one dash zero zero four and rezoning the property from C two P D to C two.
I'll go every second.
All right, we have a, a motion uh by Councilmember Dolan and a second by Councilmember Groot. We're ready to vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Congratulations and uh thank you for investment in Lake Havasu City. We appreciate it. All right, moving on to number eight point three, adopt resolution number nineteen dash three two nine six approving the submission of a grant application to the Bureau of Reclamation for Water System Leak Detection and Water Meter Upgrades and authorizing execution of necessary documents and implementation of the activities funded by the grant. Dr. Wilson?
Mayor and council, um, the resolution is such, uh, we, we have a, a leak detection survey proposal to look at all five hundred miles of our water distribution system. The last time we did this, uh, we finished in two thousand eleven to twelve. And that, that took about a five-year period on and off, rather lengthy and expensive. This, we're innovating a brand-new technology that will shorten that considerably within a month uh to do all the city. Uh, this technology is, was developed in two thousand seventeen, I'm sorry, two thousand sixteen, and has been implemented in countries around the world, plus uh as of the end of two thousand eighteen fifty-two cities within the United States. And currently, the largest is the city of San Diego invoking this uh particular technology. It is a sole source, so that will be something we'll have to address when we get to that point. But this is just to submit um a grant proposal. There's no guarantee that it will be accepted or awarded by the Bureau of Reclamation, but that, that is the general premise. As well, we want to add uh to the contribution for replacing and accelerating our water meters that tend to underread when they get old after twenty, twenty-five years. And that way, we're able to catch up faster. And that will help with our revenue as well as um unmetered water from leaks if we're, we're able to detect those. Just one other little piece of knowledge. I talked to our water supervisor the other day and between three and four major breaks happen each year uh in the water distribution system to the point where they actually tear up the streets. And so they have an, they actually have a part of their budget about, I, I don't know what it's gonna be for this year, to, to do road repair, which to me would be, is rather, shouldn't be happening if we can detect these leaks early enough. Uh, this particular technology, I think, will be a very interesting step towards uh, uh better efficiency in the long run. So that's the, the gist of what we're trying to propose at this point in time.
Great, thank you. Do any members of the council have any questions for Dr. Wilson?
If I may, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Groot?
Dr. Wilson, could you, you know, in terms that are approachable, give us just a, a brief insight into the nature of the technology as, as you see it?
It's, it's satellite imagery. I think it's a proprietary um or private satellite. Uh, this is Israeli-based company, uh, but I, they have offices all over the world, including uh here in the United States, several places. And what they do is they use a microwave uh technology where microwaves are, it's part of the radar band. It's sent down to the surface of the earth. It actually penetrates into the ground up to about twelve feet. What they're doing is they're isolating a particular portion of that band where they can detect not only water, but chlorine in the water. And if you have chlorine in the water, it can't be almost anything else but potable water. So if our distribution system's leaking, it's gonna be potable water with chlorine. So they're able to identify general areas. And they'll take the, that satellite map, overlay it into our utilities, uh GIS maps, showing where the pipelines are all over the city. And then they'll prioritize general areas uh for, and that, that will be done within a week. It's a very fast process. Then they'll have a team of people to come out and actually ground truth or survey those areas to pinpoint those leaks, which will take up to thirty days, but not, it's not guaranteed that it would have to take that long. Otherwise, if you didn't have that technology, you're going blind by using other types of uh established technology to go all over the city to cover five hundred miles. Here, you don't have to do five hundred miles on the ground. It's just from the satellite. So that pares it down much more efficiently than before.
Thank you. Any other questions of council? All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this matter? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing.
Mr. Mayor?
Vice Mayor Lane?
Motion?
Yes.
I move to adopt resolution number one nine dash three two nine six approving the submission of a grant application to the Bureau of Reclamation for Water System Leak Detection and Water Meter Upgrades and authorizing execution of necessary documents and implementation of the activities funded by the grant.
Second.
We have a motion from Vice Mayor Lane and a second from Councilmember Koch. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we will move back to item seven point two, the city manager's report. Mr. Knudsen?
Good evening, mayor and council. I am ready to go with the city manager's report for this evening. First off, I'd like to recognize our own Havasu Mobility who received the Outstanding Special Needs Transportation Program Award at the Thirty-Second Annual Arizona Transit Association Conference earlier this month. The award recognizes Havasu Mobility for outstanding services provided to the elderly and persons with disabilities, including innovation, operation efficiency, and customer service. Havasu Mobility was nominated for the award by Mile Markers Therapy here in town. Havasu Mobility provides a transit service to our seniors. Oh, and then uh, I'd like to make mention of the, the picture here. That's Patrick Cypress. He's our Havasu Mobility Program Supervisor. He accepted the award on behalf of Lake Havasu City. And he's pictured with Jill Dusenberry, who works with ADOT as the head of transit, as well as Becky Miller with the Arizona Transit Association. So to Patrick and all of our staff, provide superior transit service to our community. Nice work. The, we met with the Tri-City Council uh meeting. We met in Kingman just last Wednesday. The League of Arizona Cities and Towns uh gave a legislative update and discussed uh ADOT road projects. We talked about Safe Driving Campaign that's being headed by our, our, our Lake Havasu Metropolitan uh organization. And we had some discussions on collaborative efforts for the two thousand twenty census planning that'll include the, the three cities. Also at the meeting, we received news that Lake Havasu City is still the reigning champ for the Employee Fitbit Challenge. This one was apparently close with our employees edging out the employees in Bullhead City by just a couple of hundred steps. Uh, Kingman did finish in a distant third. Our, our employees do a wonderful job promoting health and fitness in our organization. So congratulations. Vice Mayor David Lane and Councilmember Donna McCoy attended the Marine Corps League Memorial Service over the weekend. Uh, there, where those in attendance pay their respects to those who had passed in the last year and pay their respects and honored all of our veterans that have served our country. Fire Chief Brian Davis addressed the Tamarack Neighborhood Watch Group just last Thursday at Fire Station Number Two. The main topic of discussion was our Knox Box Program, which is administered by the Fire Department, allows our employees to gain access to homes and businesses in case of emergencies. After the meeting, the crew gave a tour of the station. This is a great example of community engagement and that uh these types of activities make our neighborhood safer. Thank you to Chief Davis and Vice Mayor David Lane and the Tamarack Neighborhood Watch Group. Mayor Kel Sheehy proclaims this week, April twenty-second through the April twenty-sixth, as National After, After School Program Professionals Week. Mayor Sheehy presented the proclamation to the Lake Havasu City Recreation After School Program Supervisors yesterday during their staff meeting. Uh, in the picture, I'd like to recognize Janice Brown, who is our program coordinator, Everett Gomez. Uh, he works as, as the, the lead for Jamaica After School Program. Jackie Leiden with Smoke Tree After School Program. Of course, there's Mayor Kel Sheehy in the middle. Um, we have Eric Overfield with Havasu Pie, um, After School Program. Jackie Roy with Oro Grande, Ashley Brandon with Starline, and Donna Best Carlton is our recreation supervisor. If you're interested in becoming um a member of our police force, we have openings available. And we'd like to open an invitation on Thursday, April twenty-fifth at six P M. Here in the council chambers at the Police Department, there will be a question and answer session. We'll have information for you about job openings in the Police Department and answer any questions you have about what it takes to become a Lake Havasu City Police Officer. Mayor Sheehy is challenging all residents to participate in the National Mayor's Challenge for Water Conservation. Please visit mywaterpledge.com and show the nation that our Lake Havasu City recognizes the importance of conserving water and cares about its Colorado River water supply. Taking the pledge is free and participants have an opportunity to win prizes. The contest does end soon. It's uh April thirtieth is the last day to take the pledge. As of this morning, we're merely ranked twelfth. So we need your help. Last year, we were ranked third. And uh, we need the community's support to improve our standing. Uh, this Thursday, April twenty-fifth, McCallum Boulevard is closed from Acoma Boulevard to Riviera Drive all day from seven A M. until eleven P M. at night. And this is uh for the uh annual Desert Storm Street Party. The, the event itself is open to the public and will last from one P M. to ten P M. Public should expect delays on Swanson and Mesquite Avenues. Uh, Smoke Tree Avenue and Palo Verde Boulevard are likely quicker routes to and from Highway ninety-five and Acoma Boulevard. Please exercise caution when traveling in these areas. Uh, the Lake Havasu City Police Department is partnering with the Drug Enforcement Administration to hold the Pharmaceutical Takeback Day. That'll be uh this Saturday, April twenty-seventh, between ten A M. and two P M. Um, it's a one-day event, free of charge, makes it convenient for the public to rid their homes of potentially dangerous expired, unused, and unwanted prescription drugs at a convenient drop-off location here at the Lake Havasu City Police Department. Please know liquids, needles, sharps, or inhalers uh are to be disposed at the event. And properly disposing of these expired, unused, and unwanted pills will help prevent drug abuse and theft. And lastly, uh, the next coffee with the mayor and city manager is at uh here at the Lake Havasu City Police Department. It's on Friday, May third, and we'll be here from eight thirty A M. until about ten A M. Residents are encouraged to attend, express any issues, concerns, or questions. The meeting does not require RSVP, so please join us for an informal come-and-go setting. For more information, please contact the mayor's office at four five three four one five two. Uh, mayor and council, that concludes my, uh, my presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Knudsen. Um, is there any additional questions of the council? All right, seeing none, we'll move back to item nine, which is our current events. Does anyone have any council committee reports? No? All right, so uh, Mr. Knudsen mentioned the mywaterpledge.com. Uh, please join us. Uh, my first year, we can't be number twelve. Uh, last year, we were number three. Flagstaff's number one. So go to mywaterpledge.com. It takes literally two minutes. Uh, and let's, let's drive us up. So um, I would appreciate your help with that. Um, item ten is our final call to the public. Uh, we do have uh Mr. Seeker sign up. So if you'd like to uh come to the podium?
Thank you. My name is Douglas Seeker. My last two events this evening is, I had a opportunity to be, be part of WACOG as well as a job coach. I wear many hats where it comes as an advocate for people with disabilities. Um, I was at a, involved in a three-day event with the Department of Justice out of Washington, D.C., down in Los Angeles at their convention center, where one of the biggest thing is um, is service animals. There's only two things that you're allowed to ask. And you're at a restaurant and these animals are usually, people are afraid to talk about it. They, out of the thirty-five people that I met down there were ADA coordinators and from the different western states of the, that way, Montana, down towards Oregon and Washington. And they adopted a medallion for their dog collars where the city, people of the city had to sign a waiver, an affidavit stating that their dog was in a service animal. Uh, they seem to assume, the department loves it as long as you go above the idea that they have. The blankets around a dog were never approved by the Department of Justice, only be either by Amazon or eBay. So the department doesn't recognize the, the blankets that go over the dogs. So it's something to consider in the future. The second thing, and last, last thing, actually, number four. Mojave County is invited to a program that the statewide Independent Living Center is putting on for individuals that have graduated the ninth grade up to twenty-nine years of age. This camp is paid for for a week up in Prescott Valley to go over um how to provide disability of knowledge, how to complete uh advocacy, how to learn how to speak for yourself. The busing will be concluded, so don't let gas be a part of this. If we get enough people from Mojave County, they will use my buses from uh New Horizons Disability Center to transport, to bring them up there and also to bring them back. Um, so this is a covered, covered uh deal by the state. Mojave County has never been asked to do this. It's like they built a wall between Maricopa and Mojave. So this is the first attempt that the statewide Independent Living Center is reaching out to Mojave County. So I really am asking that people, like I said before, from ninth grade with a disability and acknowledgement of a disability, be part of this camp. And again, the transportation is free. To send in your applications and to please call Meli Santora, last name spelling, S A N T O R A. Phone number six oh two four two five five one three five. This is an opportunity for you to be part of this movement that the state would love for Mojave County to be involved in. I've been preaching this over in Mojave County, Kingman, Bullhead, and of course, Lake Havasu City. I was on the radio last week. And as of three days ago, we haven't had one applicant sign up to go to camp. Why? I don't know. But I really, really uh like to push this idea with our particular county and the city that I live in. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the city council at the call to the public? Seeing none, we'll close the call to the public. Item eleven is our future uh meetings. This Thursday, April twenty-fifth, uh, two thousand nineteen at nine A M., we'll have a budget and a C I P overview work session here at the council chambers. Again, that's this Thursday, April twenty-fifth at nine A M. Our next uh regu, or excuse me, our next meeting would then be Tuesday, May fourteenth, two thousand nineteen at four P M. will be an executive session. Tuesday, May fourteenth, uh, two thousand nineteen at six P M. will be a regular meeting. And then Tuesday, May twenty- Tuesday, May twenty-eighth, two thousand nineteen at six PM is also a regular meeting. Item twelve, do any members of the council have any future agenda items? No? All right, item three, I'll entertain, thirteen, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. We have a motion and a second. Uh, thank you all for being here.